Okay, good afternoon. I'll call the order of the January 18th, 2022, regular medium of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be a pledge of allegiance and after that, I guess we'll have a moment of silence. Josh may not have been able to make it out today. So if you all would please rise for the pledge. Okay, we do, we do not have any public hearings today and our next order of business will be public comment session. Please limit your comments to three minutes and I have some folks signed up to speak. I'll just take these in the order that I have them and so, Peggy Hannah. Peggy, go ahead. Welcome tonight.
Thank you. My name is Peggy Hannah. I live on Hemlock Street in Waynesville, North Carolina. First thing I want to say is I left the last county commissioners meeting because the acoustics are so bad that you can't hear nothing. I just couldn't handle it, couldn't understand what nobody was saying. It was not disrespect. If you'd have told me to go jump in the lake, I'd have not heard you. But my concern is that the powers that be want to make our law enforcement officers the bad guys by deflecting from the failures of the programs that we have. Programs that the law enforcement officers have no control over when they're doing their job. We as a county and a town are enabling the mentally ill and addicts to continue the destructive lifestyles with zero accountability. The law enforcement is frustrated. The people in the public is disheartened and our leader should be. The legal system is a joke in Haywood County by the offenders who continually abuse it and the people being victimized. The law enforcement officers arrest them. They get out on pretrial release. Over and over, they fail to appear. The officers arrest them. They take them back to jail. Takes county taxpayer money to pay the officer. They might be arrested two times and they might be arrested 15 for the same offense. They are abusing the system when they do not appreciate the first pretrial release. It goes on and on. I feel it would go a long way if our elected leaders, town and county, would publicly state that they understand and see the failures and they support the law enforcement officers and let the public know that you hear us and what is being done to give us relief in this. About six, seven months ago was I was here and I said, what about the victim? Okay, we're still being a victim and we're being victimized over and over weather hits. Throwing drug stuff in my, drug paraphernalia in my yard or it's up there at Walmart stealing two or three carts of stuff that causes the prices to go up. If somebody hits me that don't have no insurance, yes, my insurance will pay for it. But guess what? I'm going to pay for the higher cost of my insurance because we're not holding no one accountable. We have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Thanks for coming out tonight. Okay, our next speaker will be Sherri Morgan. Welcome, Sherri.
Thank you. My name is Sherri Morgan and I live in Waynesville. Low barrier, no rules, homeless shelters, harm reduction, no jails, no bail, felons to vote, making all drugs legal is on every socialist platform in the nation. Go online and read People's Action, the Party for Socialism and Liberation, the Democratic Socialist of America, and the Sunrise Movement's Red and Roses Caucus. You'll find social justice for criminals and felons, enabling addicts with needles and crack kits, pretrial release programs, and making it legal for criminals to steal up to $1,000 from homes and businesses. The socialists require low barrier shelters and harm reduction to increase transient vagrants and felons, to lower property values, increase crime and runoff tourists because they hate capitalism. They need to create a crisis so the government can solve it, to bring about socialism like Hugo Chavez did in Venezuela, which was one of the poorest countries in the world with the highest crime now. Down Home has a book written by the People's Action explaining how they plan to bring Waynesville and Haywood County in line with Asheville and Buckham County, who have doubled their crime and doubled their transient vagrants and felons. Down Home has closed, but new socialist groups following the People's Action agenda are opening daily. Crime in Waynesville and Haywood County is on the rise. Haywood County needs a multiple occupancy ordinance to restrict low barrier or no rules homeless shelters to protect our county from the fate of Asheville and Buckham County. Haywood County has written a new job position called a Through Care Program Director to oversee the socialist pretrial release program. This job description sounds like it was written out of the socialist playbook. This person's duty will include assisting in disciplinary action and termination of employees in all departments in the county. The posting just came down, so it's in the interviewing process with Sheriff Christopher, a person from the Personnel Department, one from the DA's office, and one from the County Manager's office. If a socialist social worker or someone pushing the socialist agenda is hired, this person could destroy our county as we know it. The mayor of New York City ended their pretrial release program because crime and arrests have doubled. Why is this board not involved in the hiring process of the Through Care's director? The socialist register is Democrats and they're trying to purge the term moderate Democrats. They aren't moderate Democrats, Republicans, or independents. They're the new socialist party. Be very careful who you vote for in government elections, school board, and judges. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri, and thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, well, does anyone else have any public comment tonight? Yeah, I'll close the public comment session and we'll move to constituent concerns. And we have Sarah Henderson here tonight, our Health and Human Services Director. So Sarah, if you'll come up and give us a report. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to give you a brief update from public health on numbers and then what we've got moving forward. Total weekend positivity, we were looking at 442 cases over the weekend, which gives us a weekly total of 883 cases from last Monday to this Monday. Our county is at a 31.9% positivity rate and climbing. So, public health has, has thrown all of their efforts into vaccination to this point. We do realize that testing is a problem. I have been working with Bryant and with different testing agencies for probably the better part of 10 weeks to get a testing company here. I'm happy to say that they will be here in the county tomorrow. All of their supplies are currently at the Health Department, so we need to get those moved to the location. But we hope to be doing testing by appointment starting as soon as Thursday morning. We've kind of kept the information about the testing site and such until we knew that they were going to be here. And then once, once they officially arrive in our county through the snow in the morning, we have a press release that will go out that will give the community dates and locations and also how they can schedule their appointments. We do ask that the public schedule their appointments until we can get traffic patterns and all of that sort of thing worked out so that we don't cause traffic issues in what is already a hazardous situation out there. But it will be very easy for them to make appointments. Once we get through what we feel like will be a big surge in the beginning, we'll be able to do them by walk-ins. But at this point, we're not really sure what kind of influx we're going to have. So we are asking that the community kind of follow those quick easy instructions, make an appointment, show up at their appointment time and not earlier. That way we can process everybody as they need to come through. So I just wanted to give you a brief update and let you know that testing is coming and it hasn't been for lack of effort, I promise. It's just, we get some things lined up and then they fall through and, and this one just kind of fell in the right direction in our favor. So we're very fortunate. There's a lot of testing sites in other counties around us that have the site, but they have a testing shortage, a testing supply shortage, a manpower shortage. So all the puzzle pieces are coming together. So that's what we have in public health. Questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I saw, I hear the, the number of cases and it went up. What is the, have you, what's the situation with the hospital?
Most recent numbers I saw this morning, and don't quote me, they're, they're still averaging somewhere 20-plus positive cases in a census of like mid 70s. So I mean basically a fourth of the people that they have at the hospital are COVID positive. I don't know about ventilators and ICU admissions. I wouldn't dare quote those, but I think Travis ran extra crews for, you know, for snow and that sort of thing over the weekend, but EMS is stretched pretty thin and the hospital seems to be too. So we're all grasping for resources right now.
Where do you get the positive cases? Who reports those?
So if they're PCR results, the majority of them filter right into a system called NC COVID that's set up by the state. If they are antigen, which is your rapid results, they pretty much get faxed to us and we put them in by hand on a daily basis. So when we got there this morning, on top of whatever had to the system, there was a stack that looked like an entire ream of paper that our staff puts in by hand.
And that's sent in by doctors' offices and pharmacies and things like that?
Pharmacies, the pediatrician's office, usually most of theirs feed in. Urgent Care in Canton, their rapid results come to us. So different providers, pharmacies that are testing, that sort of thing.
If purchases a rapid test and takes it home, you don't, you're not going to get that result?
No, sir. No, sir.
I can't tell you how many cases I know that probably aren't reported.
We know that they're-
I probably know more cases not reported than are reported. So, because they take a test home.
Yeah.
So when you have your testing, you think they'll be set up tomorrow?
That is our hope.
Okay. And, and what would you do? Just if people show up and need to be tested, they can do it at that point?
Yeah, we realize that, you know, different employers are going to require different things. Some are going to want rapid results, some are going to want that confirmatory PCR. So it was really important to us that we were able to offer both of them. It was also really important in conversation with Bryant that it was a free testing site for our residents. We realized that, you know, during COVID, there have been financial expenses that we didn't anticipate. Other companies that we looked at, we were looking at $60 or $70 every time somebody drove through the line. So we really wanted to find a company that was going to be affordable or free for our residents. So those, all of those results will automatically feed into our state program. So anybody tested at our site, whether it's a rapid test or a PCR, will automatically feed in for us. So that's kind of a win for public health, too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Our hope is with the home test, if people are symptomatic and take a home test and they're positive, we want them to stay home. I mean, it, it's good information to have. It's not information that we can track, but we're hoping that those people are staying home and staying isolated.
Sarah, what are you recommending as far as days go as, you know, the length of stay? And I may be opening up a can of worms, but I know that a lot of people like Kevin said, that's took a home test and that's always the question, do I stay in five days, 10 days, 14 days? And I know that rumors are that CDC is saying five days. So I just wondered what your opinion was.
So the new CDC recommendations are five days from your positive test or from symptom onset, whichever comes first. And then the key to that is day six through 10, so five days of isolation. The remaining five days and the stipulation is strict and proper and correct mask wearing. And not a cloth mask, but a surgical mask, a KN95 or an N95 mask. If those things can't happen, if you're in an environment where you're not wearing a mask, where people around you are not wearing a mask, then it's, it's still 10 days of isolation. So that's the key piece in the new guidance from the CDC. Some, some employers have moved to that already. We in county buildings have not. The school system has not because cases are so high right now. There was discussion with the school board and school administration and, and we've, we've held a little tighter to our, our 10-day quarantine and isolation for right now because the county cases are so high. But the, the strict mask wearing is, is the key to those remaining five days.
If somebody's still running a fever or showing symptoms, I assume they still need to stay home, even if they've been home five days.
Yes, sir.
What is the situation with, with our students, I guess? Are you seeing a high rate of COVID in them? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, our, our cases in pediatrics are definitely up. We're also seeing flu and RSV in pediatrics. The good news is, is that we're not seeing a school transmission. So the transmission that we are seeing in pediatrics is coming from, from home or within the community, which, which was the goal, was to decrease school transmission. So lots more positive on the, on the list than, than we had seen. Last Thursday or Friday, we had added, I don't know, like 123 cases to the positive lists. 24 of those were school-aged children. So, which is more than I have seen probably the whole time. I didn't look closely enough at the 400 we added today to see how many of those were school-aged children. But just from being in the pediatrician's office and contact with them, their, their numbers are escalating too.
Anybody else got any questions for Sarah? I know you've got another meeting to go to, so.
I do. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Bryant, can we do Haywood alerts on that testing site and let people know? Because by the time the media gets, you know, the media, a lot of times they're a week or several issues behind. So can we do Haywood alerts and say, hey, we've got this site and please make an appointment and maybe have a number or something like that?
We'll get something out, maybe tomorrow to announce Thursday, the full day operation.
Okay, okay. That'd be another way to let people know. Because I know when people get it, it's like, where do you go? And if they don't, you can't find the test, so they just stay home and it doesn't get reported and they just kind of do what you said. So I had an employee that had to do that. I know there's a lot of people that aren't getting counted. Okay, okay. Then under constituent concerns, on the Through Care Director, Bryant, where are we at on that hire, do you think?
Well, we, we interviewed three candidates. We got several applications. We interviewed three. The top candidate actually withdrew his application and we're still continuing the process. It's critical we get it right.
Yeah.
And so we want the best candidate to make sure that the program's successful.
Okay, all right.
Bryant, can you speak to the correction on the job placement ad? I think there was a typo and maybe Sherri or somebody mentioned how that read.
Yeah.
That was incorrect and was rerun.
When she brought that up, actually I worked with, with Kathy McClure. It seemed to be a cutting and pasting issue or something like that because the position, the way Ms. Morgan described it, does have that discussion of working in HR and that's not. I think that was pasted in a document and posted. It's really going to be just a single department. It's not going to be given advice to, to other departments or HR on hiring or discipline or anything like that. Just, just that department.
Okay. Has it been rerun? Has the ad been rerun for, for that position since that typo occurred?
I, I think it's still posted until filed. So we haven't taken it down because we haven't got another batch of applications to, to sort through.
Perfect.
Okay, does anybody have any constituent concerns?
I probably should ask this, ask Sarah this, but do you know what the cost of the test is going to be?
We used, the plan is to use some of our recovery funds to pay the lease for the facility, but because we used, the company's called Optum and they're a state vendor, the state will pick up the total cost. So there's no cost to, to any of the citizens that go get tested. So it will be free on their part. The state will pick up the cost.
Was this, was this originally designed in response to what we thought was going to be the OSHA ruling?
We, we actually did set this up in anticipation of that because we knew a lot of the larger companies in the county would need a place to send their employees if they had 100 or more. So we really did it not just for public health, but also to support businesses because testing is so scarce. We wanted to have a, a place that business could send their employees.
Gotcha.
Does anybody else have anything? Bryant, I know that our SAR's rescue team had to deal with finding a lost hiker. Can you just elaborate on that? I know you've got a report because they are so busy with EMS, they couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, the, the, we had six members of the, the search and rescue team, SAR team, as we call it, out in the Shining Rock area early on Sunday morning. We had a hiker that had gone out Saturday evening to spend the, the night and he woke up early Sunday morning with, I guess, symptoms of extreme cold. And we were lucky, or he's lucky, that he was in an area that still had cell phone signal. So they were able to find out where he was and get to him. They had to snowshoe in and got, got to him and got, got him warm. But I think it's a lesson that if you're going out in the wilderness, few minutes to see what the weather forecast is because a few diff, you know, a few paces one way or the other, you may not have had a cell phone signal. And we wouldn't have known somebody was out there because certainly with the weather forecast, what, seven days before that, we wouldn't be looking for folks. So we're, we're very fortunate that we have really highly skilled and trained folks that can go out and like that. It's, it's great we do, but we'd rather not this time of year be looking for, for hikers. It could have been a, a really serious situation out there. And just a reminder, always check the forecast before you go out. And we're also having a lot of visitors in that may be renting, vacation rental by owner or something like that. When you go, be prepared to get snowed in because I think we've had some calls the last few days of renters wanting help getting the road scraped or things like that. And, and that's beyond what services we can provide.
Yeah. Yeah, I know Saturday, I was, like everybody else, we were trying to get ready for the storm. And I remember going down I-40 towards Asheville and thinking that, boy, it's such a nice day. And, and tomorrow, it's going to be totally different. And buddy, it was, it really was. So it's totally different when you wake up.
Mr. Chairman, I would also mention one thing besides the, the search and rescue team. The, the rescues were supported by Lake Logan Fire Department, NC DOT, Haywood County Emergency Services, and North Carolina Emergency Management. So it wasn't just those six rescuers. There was a, a big joint effort.
Did you have something, Brandon?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. My hat's off to all those volunteers and, and our paid folks that go in, you know, during a storm, are already taxed with a lot of work right now with COVID and everything else going on. And they don't get recognized a lot for what they do. And I'd just like to thank them publicly for what they do and, and, and having the heart to do the job that they do. They get up out of a warm house and leave that, maybe a hot bowl of soup to go help somebody that, that's stranded in the woods with all the snow on the ground and froze to death. So my hat's off to them. I'd just like to thank them.
Thank you, Brandon. Any else?
I echo Commissioner Rogers' comments about the search and rescue team. That was terrible weather. And I know the remote location where that took place and it, it takes a special kind of person to dedicate herself to rescuing people like that. And, you know, I'm sure those people are appreciative of the job that they received. And also in response to constituent comment about the powers that be maybe throwing law enforcement officers under the bus on some of this crime and stuff, I, I personally cannot say that's, that's my position. I think you can see my voting record and I've often heard it say, if you could see somebody's checkbook, you could see where their hearts at. And I've voted continuously to support our law enforcement. I publicly commented on how I back the blue. I don't believe our county in any way resembles some of these other counties who have defunded our police. We have funded our police requests, our sheriff's department's requests. And I, I can't speak to the other commissioners, but I think I, I think I do. So we, and I don't know who the powers that be that are throwing our officers under- So we, and I don't know who the powers that be that are throwing our officers under the bus, but they're going to be no friend of mine. I back our law enforcement and our citizens deserve the best. And so I've said all I want to say about that.
I'd just echo that, I guess, too. I mean, a lot of folks don't know this, but I am a part time sworn sheriff's deputy here in Haywood County myself, so that's my family. So I feel like that I have always supported them as well and always will, and I don't mind to say that publicly. You'll never hear me say that I want to defund the police or any of our first responders as far as that goes. As I just said, my hat's off to all of them and I'll always support them and always have their back. So I don't mind to make those comments as well.
Again, I'll just say, I echo that again. In May, we have the Fallen Officers Memorial. And at that meeting, I had a chance to speak and I told that, I told all the officers there that were at that, which was most of the ones in Haywood County, that we had their back, the commission does, and we do have their back and we support them. And and I made it known at that memorial. And I just want to say, too, we are blessed in this county to have a great law enforcement with our sheriff and all the police chiefs across the county. We've had, and I'm even thinking of the past chiefs, Bill Hollingshead, they've all been really great law enforcement officers and have even worked to get laws passed at the state to strengthen law enforcement's ability to do do the things that they do. So but this board will always have their their law enforcement's back, and I want to just reiterate that again. Okay, so does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. Just, that's fine. Just weighing on what everybody else has said, you know, Asheville had an issue. The reason that Buncombe County is partially the reason that they're in the shape they're in is they did vote to defund the police. 57 of their officers left from APD, and that certainly is not the position, at least of me and for this board. And I think that we would all work very hard to protect our community and protect our law enforcement because they're what stand between us and the bad guys. So I appreciate your comments, but, you know, my heart is with the rest of these commissioners that we very much believe that's very important for our community. Society has changed and we see things coming to our door that we're working very hard to head off, and it's it's not a quick fix. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. But just like with this through care position we have, we're working very hard. We have to, we have to stop the bleeding, so to speak, between now and the time we can get the new gel built. So we're definitely working with our best interest in our, but we live here, too, so we want what's best for our community as well. I would like, on a happy note, to say a little shout out, I said this at the last meeting, but we are the Board of Commissioners and not the school board, but Pisgah High School's cheerleaders won a state championship. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to them. Sometimes the cheerleaders get, you know, a little passed over by the football players, but so shout out to Pisgah's varsity team for that.
Well said, well said.
That reminds me of something, but I won't say what it is. My daughter in law and her sister, her sister was a, her sister was a cheerleader and my daughter in law was a ball player. And so they, she says that cheerleading is not a sport. And I think her sister disagrees with that, but anyways, it's a good sport.
That's Tracy.
Is Tracy?
Tracy's saying it's a sport.
Yeah, I had a daughter that was very involved in it, and it's definitely a sport. I'll I'll admit that. They don't get the recognition they do. And matter of fact, my daughter won a state championship cheering for Pisgah, too, so.
Yeah, that's great.
It is, you have to be very athletic.
Yeah, you do.
And in shape, that's for sure.
I don't like to admit it, but they they put in a lot of hard work. Maybe sometimes more than the football players. I wasn't out of bounds.
Okay. Is that, anybody done with all that? Okay. Okay. I'll move on to agency, administrative agency reports and presentations. And first I need to, the Library Board of Trustees presentation, which is number one, and the Friends of the Smokies update, number two, we need to move those to February 7th at 9:00 AM. So I would like, if, can I have a motion to suspend the rules and then a motion to move that to the February 7th meeting? So can I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then I need a motion to move items one and two to Monday, February 7th at 9 o'clock.
I make a motion, we move it to the next meeting.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to item number three of the agency reports, and we have our annual audit report from Gould Killian CPA Group, and we have their manager here, Dan Mullenex. Welcome, Dan. Appreciate you coming out on this cold, snowy day.
Well, it's good to be here in Haywood County, beautiful county. Years ago, I moved down south back in the early mid 90s, going to Marsfield College, never moved back. I love, I love the area around here. Again, my name is Dan Mullenex, I'm a partner at Gould Killian CPA Group. I've been with this firm for 10 years and I don't know how many years now, 21, 22 years in the industry. Our industry is feeling the same punch as everybody else. We need people, so if you have any people or CPAs, we'd love to hire them, just put a little thing in there. But, you know, the world's changing. The LGC, Local Government Commission, is changing itself. They're feeling the punch there. They have a lot of retirements. Local government's feeling it, the finance side. Be very fortunate to have someone like Christian with skills in in your staff with accounting and finance. There are so many open positions and, you know, finance is one of the most, I wouldn't say equal to manager, maybe, physician in the, you know, he's, but it's, it's, you know, I'm worried about five years from now of who they're going to pull for for this. Just give you a brief snapshot of of your annual audit, and this is for through June 30th, 2021. It's done annually. Your audit report's been submitted to the LGC. There's some wrap up items that we're going to get from Christian when she returns in a few weeks for our files, but we, you know, the audit's been, it's being submitted to the LGC. So with the audit, we issued different opinions. On the financial statement, we issued an unmodified opinion on those financials similar to the prior years. We reported no material weaknesses internal control of our financial reporting. There's many counties out there that will have material weaknesses, one or two a year. Some smaller, smaller your county that you are, the more likely you probably have weaknesses. But there is no material weaknesses in internal control that we report. Also, on your compliance side, we issued unmodified opinions on your compliance. With that, we audit, we issued really three opinion, three different opinion reports. One is about government auditing standards is a report that we have to issue. The other one is with your federal and state funds and what do you spend? And this past year and next year with the ARA funding, it's more and more critical. This year, your federal expenditures was close to $10 million. Didn't give you that money for expenditures, either you wouldn't have spent it or or come out of your own pocket. And then also your state funds, about $2.5 million. And we audit, I'm not going to go through how we select it, there's a process, but we audited four major federal programs and one state programs with that. And again, with those, each program, we didn't find any material weaknesses in those programs. We did with DSS programs, we did, you know, talk, we, there's always areas to improve. And one thing that's very good to see is sometimes we say, hey, why don't you do this? And they're already doing it with training. One of the weaknesses you always, with retirements and replacements, and you have people moving it within departments, is to making sure that the new person in that role, you know, has the skills, understands, and it's always a training thing to to consider. But again, thanks, you know, to the staff here. Years ago, when I first came in the building and met Julie, knew her from before, from another, through some other source, but, you know, this, you could tell your staff is very professional, your accounting and finance staff, and it's it's kind of impressive. As a board, up on the screen, you can see a trend in your fund balance available. This is one of the most critical numbers that Local Government Commission looks at for our county, city, is your general fund. That is the heartbeat of the county's government of your financial resources. And why it's critical is, I mean, we're going through COVID two years out, and when COVID began, nobody knew what's going to happen. We didn't know, are people going to be able to pay their property taxes? That's one concern. But the big concern at counties and cities was sales tax. How are, you know, they're not going to buy anything? Well, come to find out, sales tax really bought, I call it boomed from from COVID. This year, if you can see, your fund balance available went from 40, 32 million to close to 40 million. A lot of that was a 20% hike in your sales tax revenues. So that that is one, one great thing that's helped a lot. And also, the other end is the state, state and federal funds to help COVID. So the next, this this slide, fund balance available. This is one statistic that they compare to other counties. Now, Haywood County is kind of like in the middle of all the counties. They kind of break it off from when you spend zero dollars of expenditures in your general fund to $100 million and over $100 million. You're at like $99.5 million. So you're right at the, you can look at comparing, who do you compare to? You compare to the largest counties out there, or do you compare to the median of the lowest counties? You're at about 42%. And what that equates to is 8% is one month's expenses. So you have five, five and a half months of expenses. The larger your county is, the the lower typically that rate is. The smaller your county, the higher the rate is because you just have to have a larger resource for for a smaller county. The median for counties over $100 million across the state is 32%. You're at 42%. So the count, the state average is around three and you're at five. And that, to me, as a commissioner, gives some pause, some, okay, thank you, you know, like, we've, we've got a good foundation for the future for the county, kind of like insurance, I would say. So so that's where you are related to your fund balance with your general fund. So during the year, and this is what citizens kind of want to know, is, one, where do we get our revenues from? We get them from your property taxes, equates to close to 46%. Your sales tax, which is the red, I'm a Clemson fan, so I always turn that to turn that to orange, but local option sales tax, 22, 20.2 million. So this year, it's a greater piece of of your, of your, of this pie. Governmental type grants, 24 million, and then other, other revenue sources of 10.7%. And this will fluctuate depending on the timing really of if local option sales tax keeps going up, stays the same or goes down, and the timing of grants. Your grants this coming year, the ARA funding is quite, you know, that that is the funding that is the talk of government right now. And I'm sure when Christian gets back, she'll have more to deal with, with that in the future of how the county is going to expand that money. This is the buckets where you spend your money. This is pretty close to what counties spend, and the big, the big three, education, and then public safety, and then human services. Education typically gets gets funding, some from the state. Public safety is a lot, some from the state, but it's it's more paid through your tax revenues. Human services, DSS, a lot, a big chunk of that is paid through federal and state grants. But you can see here how you, how kind of you're breaking down where you spend your money on your general fund. Your property tax collections, pretty stable. You're at 98.3%, a slight increase. If you go below 97%, you could, you get on the radar for LGC. So they kind of expect above that, you're you're doing what we, what we expect. I've seen some down at 94%. You know, it's kind of, more work to collect, to collect it over time. Generally, that's, that's what it is. I mean, I do thank my staff. I thank Travis, a manager that works, I work with him day to day, and he's on this job, y'all's job. Any questions on your audit?
You made a comment, nobody knew what was going to happen when COVID hit and our sales tax kind of carried the day. I'm sure you probably do audits for other counties. Is is Haywood County pretty much in line with other counties, or is this kind of a little island we're on here where our sales tax is higher than normal or average?
You're, I think you're on average. One of, we don't know for sure, or they don't know for sure what the true reason is, why, you know, there could, there's probably a couple of variables why it's more. I know the funding mix helped. It used to be, it's where you bought it, so if you were like for a town, you know, it depends on where your stores are. But now it's more based on population, so you'll get, you'll get more sales tax revenues. Also, if I buy something on Amazon, I hate Amazon, but I love it, but that money, you know, that's going back to your county. They can't, I mean, Amazon's not going to cheat and not charge sales tax. I mean, they don't care, they'll, they'll charge it. So, yeah, it's very, I've seen areas where, not this county, but a county close to you guys, where the county was saying, oh, when, right before, when COVID happened, for the next fiscal year, they were only deduct, they were reducing their, actually their budget by like 15%. And then like the towns were doing like 5%. It was kind of like, why don't y'all talk to each other? You're in the same place. But nobody knew, you know, nobody knew. I was scared. I was scared, oh, I have to go audit these people next year? Like, this is a huge risk. But it it seemed, you know, that saved the county. And then the COVID funding. The COVID, the problem with the COVID funding, it's great to get the money. Not to say I don't, you know, I don't like spending money, but you got the money. The problem is the reporting side and what you can do, and they kept changing the rules. Oh, well, you spend on, oh, wait a second, we'll change the rules. Well, then you have your finance director has to submit, they had a class, two classes last, one class last week where they had 500 spots for people to sign up for. They only, they had 500 people sign up within one hour and half the state wasn't able to participate. And it was about, it was about the ARA funding, like changing the rule, they changed the rule. So just keep your eyes on it, know what's going on and use, and it's also, it's a, it's a way for the counties to springboard or it's a huge opportunity if you use the money correctly. If you use it smart, you know, I don't believe you're, that type, that size of funds is ever going to be an opportunity, at least in our lifetime, so I hope not, but. Any other questions?
Percentage, the sales tax revenue percentage compared to last year, this year, compared to last year. Do you know what the last year percentage was? I mean, I know you may not know that answer.
I'm trying to remember off the top of my head.
I don't have the percentage. Taxes beat budget by over $6 million, but we had been conservative in our budgeting because we, we thought we would see a downturn, and instead we saw huge increase. And just a little more about sales tax, because I love to talk about it. So Article 39, right, that's the one that's the one cent that is That's the one that's the one cent that is point of sale, point of collection, however you want to call it. I think it, it sort of parallels what we saw in our tourism. You know, TDA tax was the highest we'd ever seen. And I think a lot of folks were scared to jump on planes or cruise ships and, and go elsewhere. And they, they came to Haywood County because we, you see, the streets were just packed and, and tourism's been very good. We had more VRBO Airbnb rentals than we've ever had. So I think the sales tax there, we really performed well. And also then the mix where per capita, we get our share based on population with the state, we did really well on it. So we, we benefited on both sides of that equation. And I, I wouldn't, well, we said when we were putting the twenty-two budget together, I couldn't project 20% increases. That's just, that's just too much. I think it, it can't continue to climb at that rate. But we're thirteen percent over last year with the latest report. So I, I don't know where all the money's coming from, but it's finding its way into our sales tax coffers. Just on fund balance, one other thing, we, we're very, besides dollars, I think fund balance is flexibility. And you know, this is the number on six thirty, well, I think it was August twenty-sixth where the flood had happened and we had to pull out five million dollars or a little over five million dollars to front the money for debris cleanup and some housing and things like that. So it, it's really good. We added it in, but we pulled it out just barely the fiscal year, you know, almost two months into the fiscal year. So it, it's great to have a healthy fund balance so you can react to either opportunities for economic development or when catastrophe hits, having a little money in, in the bank sure does make it easier.
And also, one thing it does is it actually puts a little check mark in front of the county for your bonding agencies. When they see that and they do their calculations, that helps your rates on your bonds and, and borrowing, you know, even installment loans that you'll get, you'll save on interest. And I believe interest rates will be going up. So, you know, that's, that's going to be more and more critical in the future.
Anybody else have any questions?
What's the difference in the interest rate between a double A bond rate and a triple A?
We haven't been to bond market in, in a long time, but somewhere between a quarter of a percent and a half percent between the two. So, you know, on a five-year car loan, that doesn't mean that much. But on a sixteen and a half million dollar jail for 20 years, it, it's real money. And that's why you look at opportunities to, to do refinancing and things like that when interest rates are good. So, you know, I think we're in good position as we move forward with the jail project to demonstrate to the rating agencies, we have sound fiscal management and, and we'll get a good rating out of it.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out, Dan. And I do want to give a shout out to Christian and, and her staff. She's not here tonight.
She's out on FMLA for a while. She, she's got a, a new baby, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
She's not sleeping much, I don't think.
Well, that's the best reason to be out. Okay. Okay, our next order of business is number four. Under reports is the Francis Farm Landfield Construction Project update. And we have Community Economic Development Director David Francis. And is McGill here? They didn't come, okay.
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, Mr. Kathy could not make it this evening. They had a little bit of a snow incident yesterday.
Okay, yeah, that's understandable.
A little bit under the weather now, so. The, it's interesting to be up here talking about the Francis Farm landfill. I hope this is the last time I'm up here discussing this.
Amen.
Yeah, the, I hear an amen. Yeah, so I think we all could get an amen there, that'd be great. So it, it's been a long process and it's, you know, come to a little bit of a close, but you know, we'll, we'll talk about what all still has to be done, needs to be done. So again, Francis Farm landfill began operations in nineteen seventy-three, began post-closure in nineteen ninety-five. So what made Francis Farm the trickery that it is now? It is an unlined landfill. So when that landfill was built, there was not a liner that went into the ground, you know, prevent any groundwater seepage, anything escaping the landfill. Subtitle D comes down from the EPA, all landfill now is required to have a liner. So the interesting thing about this project that we did with restricted cover is that we ultimately put a liner on top of it instead of underneath it. That's where we got there. So the county was required to have closure and post-closure processes that go through there. What is that? Landfill gas monitoring, groundwater and surface water monitoring, facility maintenance, stormwater management, soil cap cover over waste, road access, sediment and erosion control. So as soon as nineteen ninety-six rolled around, we got a Deaner letter, it was Deaner then, not DEQ, saying that we need to start sampling in accordance, coordinates to these samples that are, coordinates to these new laws and regulations that were passed then. Two thousand, January two thousand, water quality. Landfills, remember, are controlled by air, the land and the water. They have all three monitoring requirements from the state. To water quality, they're states, there appears to be very little buffer between the waste boundary and adjacent private properties. Letter also indicates methane exceedances were there at the property boundary line. At that point in time, we, the letter recommended the county should hire a licensed professional geologist and an experienced engineering firm with landfill experience. So the environmental compliance problems, landfill gas concentrations exceeding the limits of the facility boundaries are read, contaminants exceeding there. Landfill gas compliance steps, expand the facility boundary by purchasing properties surrounding the landfill, new landfill gas monitoring plan approved, new landfill gas monitoring wells installed, landfill gas recovery system installed and operational. Facility is now in compliance with landfill gas. So part of the idea there was when we were going through this process and we're learning, you know, when we assumed that the waste was just on the cap, and I'll show you some pictures here eventually, but that waste extended beyond the cap and went near, near the boundaries. And so when the methane readings come out, that's a ding, we were taking methane readings every month, we still do those readings now. And since that time, we've purchased property. We purchased three adjacent properties around there and created a larger buffer. And so buying the property, we bought the Lewis property, Shelton property, and come back around, we bought the Stevens property. So we went all the way around, basically three sixty, and we created a buffer there. And that buffer added to that so we could extend the facility boundary and move the monitoring wells out there or in compliance. So this is revised facility boundary. As I mentioned, these are adding the additional properties that you can see there. The gray area is where the original landfill is located, and now we've since succeeded, extended those boundaries there. Groundwater compliance steps, assess extended groundwater impacts and then file remedies in the assessment of corrective measures report, public meeting to discuss the report, select remedies, prepare corrective action plan, implement the plan, and assessment in progress. So a lot of that started back. We put twenty-five groundwater mail, wells, monitoring wells around the facility outside of our boundary. We went to the, these adjacent properties that I mentioned, put groundwater and wells on there. Other, other peoples, you know, we went past our boundary onto their property, learning to where the groundwater was moving to and where that plume of contamination was going to. So here's a groundwater plume map as of two thousand nineteen. You see the purple line, if that shows up, but that's the outer line there. It's, that's the, where there's no groundwater exceedances there. That's the limit of the contamination. So one of the things that we were worried about and that complement the boards and previous boards, about one of the things that we did not want to see happen was where those contaminants got into the Raccoon Creek. And that was one of the impetus is why we did this and why we stopped the contamination and the pollution, unfortunately, from this landfill. So the remedies were approved, control of contaminant sources, landfill gas mitigation system, leachate mitigation restrictive cover, natural attenuation of groundwater means that we're, we're drying it out from the top, we're trying to dry the attenuation, we're going to monitor that to see how that's working. Enacted groundwater remediation as a contingency only, where we started sucking the water out with some of the remedies that we picked. We had a public hearing there, here in this very room, back in two thousand seventeen, and discussed these remedies with, you know, a lot of the citizens, the neighborhoods were there, neighbors were concerned about, you know, what was going on next. So this has been a process, you know, we started back in nineteen, you know, ninety-five, you know, with this, two thousand and four, two thousand and seven's when we really got busy with this. Two thousand and ten, we were lucky that we received a grant that helped pay for the landfill gas mitigation system and the leachate system then. We, we got that grant, some million dollars from the federal folks, and then we had that operational back in two thousand and twelve. And so in the corrective action plan, restrictive cover, so we were, we've been fortunate in, in this process as well, too. We were able to acquire some soil from the highway two oh nine project from the expansion there. So we got a hundred thousand cubic yards, cubic yards of soil. So we stored that soil back on the Shelton property, which is right behind the bus garage, it's right behind the bus garage. So what the restrictive cover is, is that we put a layer soil on and we added the, the plastic liner, which is about the thickness of a credit card. And then we added more soil on top of that. So the, one of the interesting things, and I think you've heard me say this before, an inch of rain over an acre is twenty-seven thousand gallons of water. So what this is doing is eliminating that rainwater from going down, seeping in, and then rainwater hits the waste and the contamination, it becomes leachate. Because part of this landfill's problem is when it, when it, you know, the things that got out were eens, benzene, dichlorolithine, trichlorolithine, all the eens are bad. And so those leaked out onto the adjoining property. And so what this does is that we were averaging nearly, you know, six, you know, point two million gallons of water annually on the Francis Farm landfill. And that's what the modeling shows from the engineers. And now what this is, there'll be less than seven thousand gallons of water ever make it through the landfill. So the corrective action plans we mentioned, restrictive cover implementation, T and K out of Alabama was selected and awarded a contract in the amount of five point four million. Notice proceed was given in June of two thousand and twenty. Construction completed in August of last year for a final contract amount of five point three million. But I'm really happy to report that this project came in under budget. One of the things that McGill does that, that we are appreciative of is that this is not a global contract, five million dollars, get it done. These are unit pricing in here. You get paid for what you do, you know, how much rock you bring in, how much soil that you move and things like that. So that unit pricing really paid off. And so we were, actually, we ended up about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars under budget for, for the construction part. And that's, it's a team effort that, that got this done. So here's the restrictive cover implementation. This is the picture of the landfill before it got started. See on the, the bottom right is the bus garage. And you can see that vegetative cover that is up in the upper part of the picture, that, that's a big no-no. We weren't supposed to have any trees, anything that can penetrate and get down into the waste. That's one of the reasons all the gas exceedances were there at the boundary line. This is the end of July of twenty, September. So the old road used to traverse over waste. So one of the aspects of this project was to get, get the traffic off the way, off the waste because that road was, became very cobbley and bouncy along the way. So designed a new road that went up Francis, Francis Farm View Drive and came, came all the way around the landfill and went to the bus garage. We also ran, the bus garage was on sewer, or excuse me, on septic, we ran a new sewer line up there as well. So this is at the end of November of two thousand and twenty. There's two large sediment basins there. On a good day, Michael Phelps would have a hard time swimming across those, they're over a hundred feet long. There's two of those there. And so the landfill now is shedding water from the backside and pushing it forward over here. That's why it takes two. You see some of the ditches that were put in, and you can start to see some of the terrace, how that works out. So this is, you know, one of the things that, you know, we're, is part of our post-closure, you know, discussions that we have, that we have to take care of these sediment basins and they'll need to be cleaned out on a regular basis. As, you know, the landfill is, you know, is a live thing. It's, it's figuring itself out, the water, where the water goes, landfill gas, so one of the, so we'll be under, you know, we're under the, this post-closure, you know, as this, you know, said, you don't get rid of the landfill, you own it for life. You know, it's going to be, it's going to be around a lot longer than us, you know, and monitoring for this will take place for another thirty years after this. I'm stuck. So this is in April of twenty-one. You see the terrace is now formed there. So there was soil, a hundred cubic yards of soil was, was stacked over there, over on the Shelton property. And so all toll, we moved two hundred thousand cubic yards of soil to get this, to make the restrictive cover, put, put the, the line. And then the, so the water, you can see some of the, a little bit of the sediment, sediment basin, the other sediment basin is just right there in the bottom left there. And you see the sunshine is finally shining down. This is a picture from December of twenty-one. Grass is growing pretty well there now. But, you know, those terraces there and those slopes, you know, we're going to have to have, you know, new equipment in the future to be able to take care of the, the landfill. Like I said, you know, solving one thing creates a little bit of an issue there as well. So we're preparing those things, how we're going to take care of this on in the future. So, so what has been completing, completed, facility boundary is expanded, landfill gas recovery system installed and operational, leachate recovery system installed and operational and restrictive cover is installed. What's next? Continue to monitor the landfill gas, leachate, groundwater and surface water, evaluate effectiveness of the corrective action plan through assessment reports. Next corrective action evaluation is December twenty-second, and then we'll have a follow-up report in two thousand and twenty-four. So there you be. Questions?
I got a comment. I know when I came on the board here, this, this thing was a huge topic of conversation in our county, has been for a while. And I just wanted to reiterate that none of our forefathers did anything wrong. This was all done after the fact, all these plans to stop the leachate. There was landfills all across the state that counties had to deal with the same situation. But I'm, I'm glad this is maybe closing a chapter of the book. And I do want to say, I, I went by there several times during all this project. I made a point to go by on a regular basis. And I can tell you, I know he's not here tonight, I know you didn't mention it, but Randy Sisk, he, he done a great job. He was on site the entire time. He's very accommodating and he, he worked tirelessly on this project. So I'd, I'd like to say thank you to Randy and the people that worked with him, with the contractors and with Chris and, and David on this whole project, so say that.
I don't have any questions either. We've been dealing with this for, the whole time I've been a commissioner, so I appreciate what you, what you've done in closing it out. It was disturbing when we first had the news that we had to fix something that was allowed when it was constructed, but you've done a great job with that and, along with the folks that Tommy mentioned as well. And I appreciate it, and hopefully we can make some good use of that property as, as well.
Yep. The, it's a It's exciting to what it can become now. And the old adage about turning lemons into lemonade. We have a real opportunity out there to do something special for the community in the end. I think will be a unique and very valuable asset to the community in the future. And look forward to continuing working on that in the near future. And, you know, Tommy, I really appreciate you saying that about Randy. I was going to do some thank yous as well, too. But it's a total team effort that, about anything that we get accomplished in these big milestones and done. You know, when I started working on this in 2007, you know, I didn't envision that, you know, four presidents later, and however many, everything else that's come, you know, a great recession, and, you know, things that we've had to live through. But, you know, it's one of those projects that, you know, that we've done together. You know, Chris has been in lockstep, you know, with me ever since this has begun. And, you know, and we know about how valuable Randy Sisk is to our solid waste team. The, we laugh that we gave him a job, but we didn't know that he was going to have a baby along the way. And he takes care of this just as much as he takes care of his front yard of his house. And those employees are very rare to find. And he's an exceptional employee and does a lot of good work for the county. And I really appreciate you saying that, Tommy. But I want to thank T and K and the McGill Associates and BLE. They were there. McGill and T and K were there every day. Part of their contract is that, you know, we had construction management. And then landfills are built, even the ones that you closed out, are built with a process where, you know, the construction of quality assurance is there as well, too. And as I mentioned, the landfill's, you know, figuring itself out right now. The gas issue we're getting through right now. So that'll, we're going to probably, you know, try to figure some of those issues out as well, so.
Do you have any more questions? I'm just glad that's over with. I'm glad the project's over with.
Can't mention it again.
I think I know what you really meant now.
You're not allowed to mention this again, David.
I'll hold you to it as well.
We need to tell the state that, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll see you out, yeah, yeah.
Is it okay to move to item five? Economic development update, David?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let's switch hats here. All right. So I wanted to bring commissioners up to speed on the things that Mr. Moorhead and I've been discussing for a bit of time now, and about how, you know, we step into the new economy. As you heard Mr. Keever up here talking about how things are different now than they were simply just two years ago. So it's one of the things that we have new challenges and new issues ahead. And we'll talk about that and look forward to your input. So what is economic development? North Carolina General Statutes 158-7.1 says that each county and city in the state is authorized to make appropriations for economic development purposes. The appropriations must be determined by the governing body of the city or the county. So economic development, just mentioned the general statutes. What is economic development? According to a private organization that Haywood County is a member of, the International Economic Development Council, set of programs and policies that aid in the creation, retention, and expansion of jobs, development of stable tax base, and the enhancement of wealth. Economic development aims to influence the growth and restructuring of a community's economic, economy to enhance its well-being. This is achieved through job creation, retention, wealth creation for individuals, businesses, tax base enhancements. While the private sector ultimately creates the jobs, the role of economic development organizations, through the core activities of business recruitment, retention, expansion, and business creation and entrepreneurship, is to create the conditions that better enable businesses to compete and thrive. And so, it jumps. So, history about our Economic Development Commission. The EDC was formed in 1982 and restated in 2003. EDC moved to the chamber in 2014. County and chamber agreed to partner with Asheville-Bunkham Chamber and EDC in 2018. A lot of kudos to C.C. Hipps for developing that plan. I think it's really worked out well for us on several fronts. The existing EDC has been notified earlier about this month about realignment. So what's next? Here's the challenges that we're facing. Workforce issues. Unemployment as of November 2021, 2.9%. December of 2018, it was 2.8%. Initial unemployment claims in November, this is a week. This is just one week, and they didn't tell me the week of. We had 142 initial claims. We still had 350 unemployment claims for the month of November. So job openings as of last week were 1,231 in Haywood County. Workforce housing, 75% of housing units for sale are 300,000 and above. Rents are increasing at accelerated rate versus wages. Long-term rentals are becoming short-term rents. The, it's all article in the paper today. Reiterate some of the things that, you know, anywhere between 20% to 22%, depending on who you're reading, is what we've seen in a housing increase from 20% to 21%. Broadband, Haywood County has received various grants from the North Carolina Department of Information and Technology. And will be issuing a new round of great grants. Since that time, found out the great grant will be, start back up January 31st, due sometime in April. And there's also two new programs completing access to broadband and filling in the gaps from the state as well, that we will be applying for grants then as well, too. So depending on who you read or where you read it, you know, Haywood County still has anywhere between 30% to 50% unserved. Because, you know, if you remember from, you know, Dr. Porto saying that, you know, if there's one house in a census block that has broadband, guys up there in DC count it as having broadband. It's not true here in Haywood County. So the next chapter. The Haywood County and Economic Development Corporation of Haywood County will be a 501(c)(3). The charitable nonprofit corporation will involve Haywood County, the private sector, and community advocates to provide support for economic and community enhancement and to aid in solutions of community challenges. That's my mission statement. Feel free to change it if you want to. The charitable nonprofit corporation will be able to accept donation and grant funds. So as we mentioned about, you know, talking about Francis Farm. If we're trying to develop a park or develop another park, we'll be able to use the, this corporation to be able to go solicit, you know, donations and changes to that, to help build, you know, parks. Several grants, broadband grants that we had, they needed to be run through a nonprofit, not through a county government. So this, one of the ideas, setting up this corporation, would be able to have that kind of corporation to be able to do some of this, you know, extracurricular, you know, issues that we have, to be able to address some of those. So who are the members? The permanent or ex officio members, ex officio, who they are in the county. Haywood County Chairman or designee as the EDC representative. Mr. Kirkpatrick is the EDC representative there. Haywood County Manager, Haywood County Community College President or designee. Haywood County Chamber of Commerce President or designee. Haywood County Tourism Development Authority Executive Director, designee. Haywood County School Superintendent or designee. And Haywood Nation President or designee. There are at-large directors. Someone from Soundtrack and Neuro Representative. Finance Banking Representative. Healthcare Hospital Representative. Manufacturing Representative. Utility provider Representative. So that's sort of the standard EDC models that you see throughout. But here's where we're taking it, the next step, in trying to help address some of the issues we've got going. So I consider what I call community advocate directors. Somebody from agriculture, which we've not had a representative of before. Broadband, recreation, and somebody from workforce housing. Non-voting members would be the Haywood County Community Economic Development Director, will serve as the director of the corporation. Advisory members would be the Asheville Chamber, Executive Director for Economic Development, and Southwestern Commission Executive Director there. The executive committee. Haywood County Chairman or designee. Haywood County Manager. Two additional members from the permanent directors. Two members from the at-large director. And one member from the community advocate directors. And the Director for Community and Economic Development for the county. Questions?
David, what's the timeframe on putting this together?
Well, this is the initial meeting. So the, the at-large directors and the community advocate directors in this initial phase will be picked by the Board of County Commissioners. And after that, then the bylaws will allow the board, after that time, to pick their members from there. But this initial time, it'll be up to the county commissioners to sit this board. So getting, so what timeline would be? If you like this framework that we're discussing, then at the February 7th meeting, then we would bring a resolution to the board to establish the new corporation and to dissolve the other entities that are out there. And then at that point in time, we'd have to schedule interviews for that. So, you know, sometime in the, you know, late first quarter, late part of the first quarter, or the early part of the second quarter this year. So my idea is that the executive committee will meet monthly. And let's call it the big board will meet quarterly. But, you know, to get our feet started running, you know, we'll meet monthly to get everything on the board. I've been talking to some folks that will help facilitate and get the board and, you know, get ideas from the board, not just hearing me talk, but a third party to help with the board get started and get some of these initiatives going.
Certainly is timely. You've got a big gap to fill there with unemployment being so low and 1,200 job openings. And that housing needs continue to be a topic of many conversations.
And that's why, you know, it needed that, we needed to expand our horizons. You know, because a lot of folks are just asking, you know, I'm having, you know, corporations now ask about affordable housing. What can we do to help with affordable housing? What can you do to help us, you know, fill the seats? So one of the, one of the things that Brian and I have been working on and with the Haywood Community College is a new program that we'll be bringing to here shortly, the Haywood Hires Program. You know, trying to fill out, you know, places that we can fill out and try to, you know, work in different venues that we've not had to, you know, to work in before, you know. Before, you know, there'd be job openings and people to fill. But now, you know, companies are listening, and we've got, you know, several buy-in from the companies on our Haywood Hires Program already. And so we're excited about, you know, starting that. Mr. Moorhead and the managers, we've met with Dogwood. We're continuing to talk about, you know, affordable housing there. One of the things that I want to talk about, you know, we said we have workforce housing, affordable housing, but it's essential housing. That's what I look at, you know, our police officers, our EMS workers, you know. They're getting driven out of the market. You know, 75% of the houses are 300,000 and above. You know, substantial, substantial paychecks to pay for that. Yeah. So this board, the board's got a lot to tackle. And so, but, you know, you can tell with that permanent folks there, those people are invested in Haywood County. Adding from the at-large and community advocate directors, I think this will be a really exciting board to put together, you know, and work towards, you know, these different aspects and challenges that we have in front of us.
Don't sound like there's much affordable housing anymore. I mean, 75% over 300?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea what the average wages are on these 1,200 openings?
I don't. It just was a quick snapshot with a conversation with the employment security work first.
Be interesting to see how that correlates with the cost of housing.
Yeah, yeah.
No, thank you for the presentation.
Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Our next order of business is a discussion or adjustment of the agenda. I don't have anything as he wants. Okay, we'll move on to constituent, I mean, I'm sorry. We'll move on to consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent, on the five items on the consent agenda? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion at all?
Yeah, I have one, I have one discussion item. Item number five, where the Sheriff's Department is going to accept this grant is a memorial justice grant in the name of Edward Byrne. So I guess to do Mr. Byrne some justice tonight as far as being memorialized. I did a little research on him earlier today. And this fellow was 22 years old. He was a New York City policeman. His father was a New York City policeman. He'd been on the job for seven months. He was given the task of guarding a key witness in a drug ring there in Queens, New York. He was sitting in a Mark patrol car out in front of this key witness's apartment. There was two fellows approached his patrol car tonight. One tapped on the passenger side window. The other went around to the driver's side. There was two guys watching the street. And they shot him in the head right through the window. He was protecting his key witness. That murder was initiated from prison, the kingpin of this drug organization that certainly didn't want this witness to testify against him. He was later convicted of that murder, even while he was in prison. So this was a national issue. And President Reagan, President Reagan called this man's family personally to offer his condolences. And in 1988, George H.W. Bush, during his presidential campaign, he carried with him continually a memorabilia from Officer Byrne. He carried his badge during his campaign. President in 1988. So this is a memorial grant. Accepted it, the Department of Justice, Merrick Garland, I think, has mentioned on this document, accepting this grant for 11,000 so few dollars. So I just wanted to give Mr. Byrne a little accolade here. I do appreciate our men in the blue. You put your life on the line all the time. I gladly make the motion to accept the consent agenda with this item especially. You know, $11,000 in memory of him, 22 years old. Gave the ultimate sacrifice to try to protect the public. And I just wanted to throw that in as we vote on this consent agenda.
Well, thanks for the info, Tommy. That's interesting. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, I believe, right? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you for that, Tommy. Okay, we'll move on to a regular. Item is the request approval of county transit contract between Mountain Projects and Haywood County and approval of the required federal transit authority policies to sustain compliance with subrecipient agreement with the City of Asheville to operate transit services through Mountain Projects. And we have Cy Simmons here tonight. Welcome, Cy. I appreciate you hanging around.
Mr. Chairman, this is the same contract that we've discussed in previous. And Mr. Bryan and his staff and Christian has worked very hard to get the verbiage exactly like the City of Asheville wants it. And I think we're real close to that. So this, I think it's worth noting that Mountain Projects has been reporting to the FDA for 22 years, very successfully. And will continue to do that as a sub, as a vendor for the subrecip, Haywood County's subrecip. We're working real hard with the City of Asheville, and I think they're... We're working real hard with the City of Asheville, and I think they're really wanting to dot their i's and cross their t's, especially during COVID times, and cares money and things, you know, that we're dealing with. But we, we feel like we have a good contract before you now, and, and we'd like for you to approve that.
Yeah, I was looking at it. It's really thick. Okay. Is anybody having questions on that?
Brian, you good with this? And Frank?
We, we've all looked over it, and it's sort of required so we can keep getting the federal funds. There's a lot of jargon in it. It's, it's pretty extensive, but I think it keeps us in compliance to keep the funds for transportation coming in.
Okay.
Can I, I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate, say an aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, number two is the request approval to offer a food for finds event at the Haywood County Public Library during the month of February for allowing the waiver of outstanding library funds for the individual library cardholders by donating canned and boxed food to help assist local organizations who distribute food to those who are in need. Welcome, Kathy. We have our library director, Kathy Vosler, here tonight, and thanks for hanging in there, Kathy.
Thank you. Good evening. So in May of 2019, we last held a food for finds event at the libraries, and at that time, we collected about 2,000 cans or boxes of food in exchange for waiving about $2,000 in overdue fees. Food for finds gives cardholders who do owe money to the library system an opportunity to bring in one can or box of food in exchange for a dollar in waived fees. And at that time, the food collected, we gave to several local agencies, the Salvation Army, Brighill Children's Home, and Haywood Pathways, also the Community Kitchen in Canton, and First United Methodist Church Food Pantry in Canton. It seemed like good timing to offer this event again, with everything everyone's gone through over the past couple of years, including COVID, tropical storm Fred, inflation, plus it's probably a good time to replenish food pantries after the holidays and all of the food that they give out for, for those events. Also, food insecurity in Haywood County continues to increase. In 2019, it's 12.7%, and now in 2021, it's 13.6%. So tonight, I'm seeking your approval to have another food for, food for finds event during the month of February at the libraries.
This is a great idea.
It is a great idea.
Anybody have any questions for Kathy?
I just say it's a great idea, just like our chairman just said.
Yep. I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item two?
I make a motion to approve item two.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate, say an aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy. Okay, item three is the request approval of the 2021 tax collections, updating refunds. We have our tax collector, Greg West, here tonight. And Greg, I appreciate, I noticed that you're almost setting records there on collections, and I don't really get any complaints either, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope, good evening to all you commissioners. I hope everyone's having a good New Year. I know some of us are having some better than others.
Greg had a bet with Tracy, and he wore his Georgia mask, and that was a very good game, and that game was a lot closer than the score was at the end.
It was.
I'll tell you that, so. But you're a good sport, you're a good sport, Greg. But I thought it'd be good if you could just give us the report on that.
I will say, I think, I will say that I think the Pisgah cheerleaders are better athletes than the Alabama squad was that night.
Oh, well, you're entitled to your opinion. Tracy and I, we've gone back and forth on these ballgames for, for a long time, and it's, it's always fun to, to play Georgia. I'm just glad I'm not having to wear a Florida or Clemson mask tonight. Just a little report, we finished up December 2021 at 78.66%, which was collecting $36.6 million. Last year at this time, we were 72.9%, so we're just a little bit better than we were last year at this time. And it's, we've already, you know, made a huge jump since turning of the new year. Tonight, we're probably about 91.42%. So things are going well. We appreciate the community contacting and communicating with the office. That always is a big plus to help us to work with people that need, you know, payment plans and things like that. So just like to give a shout out to the staff. They work awful hard to give good service. I'm very proud of that, and look forward to having a finishing up this, this year on a, on a good note as well. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Greg, could you, could you go over the senior exemption qualifications again? I know it's been brought up in here before, but just to put it back out there for, for people.
If you are over the age of 65 and your household income is less than $31,900, you are able to qualify for a senior citizen exemption, which reduce your taxes quite a bit, and I believe it, it also takes the landfill fee off as well. So it's a huge program. We tell everyone that comes in, you know, that we feel might be eligible, because a lot of people don't know about it, even though we put it on the back of the bill each year, it's on there, you know. And so you've got between January 1st and the end of May to get your application from the assessor's office, get that information into them so they can review it, and then by the time the bills come out in September, you know, you should know if you're qualified or not. But it's, it's a great program, and I'm glad we're able to offer it.
They have to, they have until the end of May?
Yeah, 1st of June, I believe is correct.
Okay.
And they have a checklist they give you at, in the personal property office, so if you'd like us to send you one, let us know, give us a call, we'll mail you one or email it to you, whenever, because it's a great program to help these people in need.
Just lost the bat again.
Cal, entertain a motion. Will you approve item three?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Not a discussion, but just a comment. Greg, I hear a lot of great things about you and the job you do and being professional, and, and that's good to hear. The percentages look great as well, and I know when I come to pay my taxes, Greg was out there working just as hard as his staff was, and they were all working hard. So we appreciate the job you do. You're doing a great job.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Okay.
Good sport, too, Greg.
All those in favor, say aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, well, we'll move on to item four, which is to request approval of authorizing the county manager to purchase six vehicles comparable to the previously approved purchase of six vehicles on December 6, 2021, due to the three vendors who were awarded the bids are not able to fulfill their submitted bid. The purchase price for the six new vehicles is not to extend, exceed the original approved bid amount, totaling $166,774. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This is a little bit of an odd request, but we are asking for the flexibility to try to replenish our fleet vehicles for this budget year. I'm sure, as all of you know, that vehicles are very short on every lot, used or new. We did find out after awarding the bid to nine fleet vehicles, that six of those were unable to be ordered. This flexibility could allow us to potentially grab one that another jurisdiction may decline from one of the fleet sales. An example would maybe be Elderton Dodge that has a Charger that was ordered perhaps by the town of Waynesville, and they declined that, would give us the flexibility to purchase that quickly and immediately. Also, there are some other vehicles that may be available through Ford. Dodge has closed all fleet orders, Chevrolet has closed all fleet orders, still has small trucks and SUVs available. So we're evaluating the fleet to determine if the possibility exists to maybe replace some F-150s with Rangers, just to help replenish our fleet for this year. So this flexibility would help us to try to offset the, you know, those six vehicles we're not able to purchase.
Is anybody having questions for Chris? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion. Did you have one, Tommy?
How long do you expect this supply line issue to, does anybody have any idea?
The, the three vendors that, that were not able to fulfill the orders have said to expect it through the end of 2023. The, I guess the shortage of materials and maybe labor, the, the window for ordering fleet sales was greatly decreased this year. It typically opens the 1st of October and runs through about the 1st of February. Chevrolet's window was only about six weeks, the Dodge Chrysler window was just a little more, and Ford is closing theirs by vehicle type, not totally. So I, I expect it to go for a couple more budget cycles.
But I guess you guys are on top of it. I mean, as far as the county garage and their mechanics, it's possible that we may try to have to, if we get caught in a supply crunch, we're probably going to have to maintain our fleet a little better and try to extend the service years, or months, or years, or whatever. Naturally, it's going to have to happen if we can't get the vehicles.
It's sort of a catch-22, because if, that's why we're asking for this, because if we can't get the vehicles, that adds mileage to it and requires more maintenance from the garage. And we only have two positions at the garage. One's not filled right now. So as the county grows and we add vehicles, we haven't kept up with staff, so it's incumbent on us to keep refreshing vehicles in a timely manner. Yeah, and it's tough, and, you know, it used to be you could buy a Crown Vic as a patrol car, and you would get 10 years out of it, and the Dodge Chargers are really the only game in town right now. And, you know, at 90,000 miles, we put new engines in them. So managing the fleet is, is really difficult, and, and, you know, we went through the bid process, tried to get the best prices we could, had responsive bidders, and then they tell us shortly after we award the bid, they can't get the vehicles. That's not their doing, but supply line has got us all in a jam. So Chris and I talked last week, we're trying to scour, you know, different car dealers and find vehicles, so we don't add that to the garage, because they can't keep up. It's tough.
Not, not only is there a shortage of vehicles, but there's a shortage of a lot of parts. I'm sure Brandon, well-known in his business, that, that there's a lot of parts you can't get. We, we have a Ford Escape that's been sitting on the lot at Taylor now for about three months, waiting on a brake module. Ford's now told us that it's discontinued and they can't get it, that two auto parts list that on an aftermarket part, but they've been unable to get it, too. So we have a Ford Escape that's an 08 model, that's, I think it's got 120,000 miles on it, is unusable at this point. You know, so we, we anticipate seeing more of that as well.
Where I work, where I work, getting parts in a, in a timely manner is a huge management issue right now. Business is not as usual. These folks think they can pick a phone up, get one overnighted in here from Charlotte or Atlanta or somewhere like that. It's not happening. So it's requiring more planning, more forward thinking, because you know the supply chain issues out there. If you can predict a failure or do some preventive maintenance and see something, it's, it pays off. It's a huge plus if you can look down the road a little bit further than, than what we could a couple of years ago.
There's no question. Two years ago, you could call any of the local auto parts and have delivered within 30 minutes or an hour any parts you needed. Now we're having to stock brake pads, brake rotors for patrol cars in larger quantities and numbers than we ever have. If Christian was here, she'd tell you that we've upset the budget a little bit by trying to stock more inventory to not have those delays for repairs. Our tire inventory, we're stocking as many of those as possible, especially for emergency services.
Not, not only is the availability a problem, but if you do find it, you're going to pay a lot more. I mean, it don't matter if it's buying a new car, if it's buying new tires. When you do find it and it's available, you're going to pay, pay a premium price for it. So huge concern, but.
I'm sure things like this causes you guys a lot of headache, as far as being able to manage things like this. I'm sure it causes you some pause. I mean, it does me.
Unfortunately, some of it's managing us right now. We're just doing the best we can with that.
Entertain the motion. Will you approve item four of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All those indicates by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Chris. Our next order of business is appointments, and the county manager, we have two to appoint. Brian, go ahead and, you can go ahead and take those over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received email from Waynesville Planning Board requesting Ginger Hane to be reappointed for a second term as an ETJ representative, with the term expiring June 30, 2024.
I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item one of the appointments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Brian, number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also received another email from Waynesville Zoning Board requesting George Escaravag to be reappointed for a second term as an ETJ representative, with his term expiring 6/30/2024.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item two?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Anybody have any other business before the board? We do not have a closed session. I'll entertain a motion. Will you adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.